Becky, I can't hear you. Can you hear me? I cannot hear you. Can you hear me? It looks like you were muted.
Hello?
I can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and Greg, am I able to?
Yeah, let's full screen it.
Go with you.
Okay, now. Now your co-host.
Thank you. Right, did you see the security? Things I just did, Greg? I'll be able to. How's the weather up there?
It's raining cats and dogs.
We were supposed to get cats and dogs here. I think we've got, you know.
Mice.
Yeah, yeah. It's not much.
All right, I was hoping we'd get something.
Absolutely. Not, not. Too much of a problem.
I'll be up there tomorrow. I hope it's sunny.
It's supposed to be sunny and hot tomorrow up here.
Yeah, that's good.
Right, wait one minute. Okay, it's 6:30. I would like to call to order the Monday, July 18th, 2022 meeting of the Manchester Select Board. Let's have a roll call for all those in attendance. Brian Solace.
Here.
John Round.
Yes.
And Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata. Oh, I see, and Becky Gates. We're all here. Chairs report, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for the Crosby family and the loss of David who had been just a phenomenal and instrumental member of the community and town government for many, many years. And his contributions include on comm, a lot of conservation efforts, Select Board. Just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And as we always do, as a courtesy, not a necessity, but a courtesy, public comment on items not on the agenda. Anybody in the audience? Kathy Bellata. Okay, oh, you know what? Kathy cannot unmute herself. There we go. Okay, unmute yourself, Kathy.
That's just what I wanted to let you know that I could not unmute myself. So you, I'm all set.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have comments before we move along to the posted agenda? Okay, seeing none. First on the agenda is water and sewer rates for fiscal year 23. We have Nate Eros on for DPW. Greg?
Sure, so this is a little bit formulaic because it's based on the budgets that were approved by, by the voters at town meeting. And so the, the rates then are, are set to set to, to generate the different amounts of monies that are needed for both the water and sewer. So with the budgets that were approved, we are looking for a 3% rate increase for both the water and the sewer user fees. Everything is, is, everything else is the same. So the only thing that you're changing here are the, are the user rate fees that increase at 3% over the current rate. And so those will be in place for this current fiscal year that goes from July 1 until next June 30. The operational costs, so for sewer, we cover 100% of the cost by the users as well as water operational costs, 100% are covered by the user fees. And then for capital costs, we we do a split for the sewer because not all town properties are on sewer. And so 75% of the costs for capital are paid by the users and 25% are covered by by all taxpayers from the tax base. On the water side, that is, water is available townwide. And so the, the capital cost for water typically funded through the taxpayers, through the general tax, but we do supplement that with user fees as well. But in terms of a policy, it's 100% possible through the taxpayers. And so for sewer, we're proposing that the rate go from $15.10 per 100 cubic feet to 1555. And then on the water side, we have a tiered system. And so the more water that property uses, the higher the rate becomes. And so we, we go up in different tiers. And so for the first 900 cubic feet of water, currently was at 636 per 100 cubic feet. And now that would go to 655. And then the next tier is from 900 cubic feet to 1700 cubic feet. And that currently is at 647, and that would go to 666. And then on down the different tier. So there's a total of, of six tiers and on up to anyone who uses more than 39,000 cubic feet of water, which is a lot. We don't have that many people doing that much water. But there are some. And so for, for that last batch, for anything above 39, 100, 39,000 cubic feet of water, the 100 cubic feet of water, then that would be an increase from 896 to 923, which is the highest, the highest tier. The sewer capacity fee is, is recommended to stay the same, and that's at $15 per gallon. It's based on Title V flow. And a bedroom under Title V requires 110 gallons. So it's 110 times the $15 per gallon is, is what the sewer connection fee is based on. And that fee is, is used to continue our INI work in filtration and inflow, meaning we're removing unwanted water from the system, groundwater or rainwater entering into the system. And by continuing to remove that unwanted water from the system, we're able to increase our capacity because we don't have to set so much aside for processing unwanted water into the system. So we continue on that process. Over the last, you know, half dozen years, we've made good progress on, on our INI. We've been improving the system. And we'll continue to do so. And that, that sewer capacity fee helps us continue to do that. So that's the overview. Like I say, it's a 3% increase based on the budgets that were approved at annual town meeting.
Um, I, I have, I know we sort of touched on this last time, but I, I, I think with the situation with water right now, I mean, it seems like the more you use, the better the deal here. Well, I mean, it's, 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 it doesn't go up in an exponential way.
But it does go up exponentially.
It does go up, but not, I mean, I think that.
You think it should, we should be, there should be more of a price change between tiers?
I do.
Exponential is a little.
It's a little high. I agree. That would be harsh. But I just wonder, is there a reason, and Nate's on, I know that's not necessarily his bailiwick, but Nate, is there? Do you, do you know if there's a reason that it's not done that way?
Um, so I know Eli had looked at it a few years ago and, and kind of done some modeling on it and came up with kind of a bell curve that fit at the time. What I will say is that, you know, the Water Resource Task Force Group, I think, is doing some good work right now, and we've given them all the data we have. And they're going to be looking at the modeling and trying to come up with, I think, you know, you know, some alternatives to the existing rate structure. And, you know, as a result of their group working on it, can give, you know, the selectmen and the DPW, you know, potentially some recommendations of, of how we could change it. You know, hopefully they can give us a few that we can consider. And we can go from there. But, you know, knowing that that work was underway and that they were looking, digging into it, you know, pretty extensively. You know, we felt that just going with the standard 3% raise across the board was fitting for this year.
Yeah, I can corroborate that. We discussed that.
Well, and that.
In the water, in the water. So that'll be coming out of that. But I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Kathy had her hand up first.
Go.
So we'll go to Kathy first.
Thank you. Um, yes, I, I agree with where the conversation is going here. I know I'm kind of new to this process, but I have one question and one comment. My question is, has the tiered rate structure that's here had any meaningful effect on the behavior of the residents? Yes or no?
Nate?
Yeah. It's.
I would, I would jump in and say that we have not seen a reduction in the large.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was my suspicion. That was my suspicion.
You know, the larger, you just tend to be larger properties. They tend to be wealthier property owners and they're, they're not being impacted. They're not worrying quite as much. You know, we might have seen some marginal cup, you know, savings and people being more conservative. So about the lower to middle tiers, but just because people on lower incomes are more conscious of those dollars.
Right. So my, my comment then, as I suspected as much, my comment is that, that twofold here. Generally speaking, there are just too many rates. Okay? Rate structures are complicated enough to manage, and there are just too many. And to Becky's point, there's not enough differentiation for them to be meaningful. And then thirdly, typically when you have a different rate, there is a specific purpose behind it. So a rate will typically have a label associated with it. So for example, in California, I've been poking around because they have real water problems there, right? Irvine, they have four rates. There's a base rate, and there's a rate for people who are really good at conserving. They get a deep discount. And then there are, you know, rates for people who are a little inefficient. And then there is a wasteful rate, people who are knowingly wasteful. Okay? And so just, I would ask this Water Resources team or, or Nate or Chuck, whatever the right team is here to consider looking at the West Coast for some of those best practices regarding behavior change. Because they are far out ahead of where we are right now. And I'll, I'll send you guys some links that I've stumbled on. But I, I agree, this is not, this is not meaningful differentiation. And so I, my concern is that because it's based totally on usage, we're actually penalizing families here, you know?
That's a good.
That's my concern.
Okay, um, thank you. Paula, I'm going to come back to you. I'm going to go to the board members first. John Round?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I assume that the revenues that we get out of this essentially balance the costs here. I mean, this isn't necessarily a, this isn't a source of funds here beyond what the water uses. Is that correct, Nate? And/or Greg?
Yes, it is.
And, and in past years, like last year, it was within 1%, because you're guessing here on, on how, how the numbers are going to come up, correct? I won't say guessing, but your.
Well, inflation definitely is.
Yeah.
Right. So obviously, it's very consumption dependent.
Yes.
So in a, in a dry year, like this one is shaping up to be, we, we tend to bring in more revenue because people are using more water for irrigation. Last summer was a wet summer, particularly July. And so our consumption goes down and some of, and our revenue isn't as high.
Okay. So. But last year, last year, how did the revenue match up against the costs? Do you know offhand or?
I, I don't have the, the final numbers on the books. I know it, it was sufficient, but it wasn't. Normally, we like to bring in a little extra funds than over expenses so that we can build up our capital funds for enterprises.
All right. Next question. What was the percent increase last year?
I believe it was, I want to say one and a half, two.
Okay. And, and this three is kind of anticipating inflation, maybe it's going to be, oh, well, it's got to be a warmer summer, I assume, than last year, which was not very hot and dry.
Yeah, so last year was 2.25%. This year, we've seen a market increase in chemical use, electricity, obviously. But the chemicals has been a big driver. We're in a consortium with many other towns in the region, and just the cost of chemicals for everyone has gone up fairly significantly. But, you know, just general market uptrends as well.
What kind of chemicals?
Uh, everything from chlorine to our floculents, you know, anything that we need to treat, the chemicals we use to treat the water with.
So the standard ones?
Oh, yeah.
All we've been using.
Yep, yep.
Um, Paula Pollophilius. Sorry, Greg, did you want to say something?
No, just that those chemicals are both water and, and sewer side.
Correct, yep.
On the drinking side and on the, on the, on the sewage treatment side as well.
Thank you. Paula?
Hi.
Are you speaking as Board of Health or a citizen?
Paula Pollophilius, citizen.
Okay, your address, please?
One Wood Hollow Road here in Manchester.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that not all large water users are big homes. For instance, my family owns the multi-unit apartment complex on Desmond Avenue. And that's made up of three different buildings, and each building has approximately eight apartments in it. So it falls under a large use, but it's actually one building with eight families. So I've always, aside from separately metering every apartment, there's no way of splitting up that bill to reflect that it's eight families per building or 24 families in total. So it's very complicated, I understand, but I just wanted to make a note that not all large water users are large homes. And that's it.
Thank you. And I know that's come before. We've tried to figure that one out with you all before. So but thank you for pointing that out, Paula. That's a good point. Any more comments before we take the vote? May I have a motion to approve the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 20?
Becky, I'm, I'm sorry, I just couldn't get off mute fast enough. I apologize. Just, just one comment. Before we take a vote, I would like, I, I think there's, I'm hearing a general consensus that we are there, there's no big change that we're willing to entertain right now today for this year. However, I wouldn't want to just vote on these rates without a clear understanding as to when we're going to hear back either from the, you know, the water team, the DPW, some, some set of proposals to come before this board on doing things differently. That's what I would be looking for. I, I'm looking for a timeframe. When will we get a, a list of new options to consider?
Well, that's, the Water Resource Task Force has been working on options, and they, there's been dialogue with the Board of Health as well.
So much.
It's, yeah.
So not for next year?
And that, that's borderline. If we're fast, we could get a list of recommendations, which would probably include something, something involving the water rates here by this time next year, but it's close. We have an 18-month window that we're supposed to operate in to have re-entries, and that clock started ticking in January.
And there is a huge amount of work that is, that is undertaken.
But we're pretty efficient, so. Let's hope we can have enough of that time.
So Kathy, why don't we say that, that, you know, that we will try? Let's hear what the Water Resource Task Force can bring to us when we next meet. And get them to give us an idea of a timeframe at that time. Hopefully, we can do it for next year.
But at a minimum, what I would like to recommend that we consider is communicating to the residents on appropriate usage. And, and we're not, I don't see that we're doing that right now. I, I could be missing something, but in order to change a rate structure in the future, regardless of what the Water Committee says they recommend, there, that kind of starts the clock, and then you've got to communicate to residents. I mean, it could be another two or three years before you actually implement meaningful change. And I'm not sure we can wait that long to do something. So, okay.
That doesn't, no, I, I don't think.
Okay.
You know, and quite an accurate assessment on that point. And I think that, you know, we're going to be talking about drought conditions next.
Yeah.
And education, yes, is, is huge. And as we know, that's hard. We can put the word out there in a variety of ways.
I have a question. Go ahead.
I'm gonna, go ahead, Anne.
Yeah.
One of the things that the, we should take back, you should take back to the Water Resource Task Force on this subject is the question of dealing with multi, multiple family usage on a single, on a single meter. Because unless we deal with that, we will be penalizing the sort of growth that we want to see.
And the problem that we talked about, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole right now because it, it does end up going to putting in brand-new meters
Yep.
for each place and the cost of that. But yes.
Not necess, actually, not necessarily, yeah.
We're gonna come back to that another time.
Okay.
Paula, no, sorry, Steve Gang?
Thank you, round of chairs. Sorry, it is difficult to unmute sometimes. You're correct that our recommendations are due in mid 2023. But several board members and, and Greg have impressed on us the the usefulness of getting recommendations which can be formalized by November done in that timeframe so that they be relevant to forming the budget for next year and then probably informing the, the annual setting of rates that you've just done. So I don't want to overpromise, but I, I do want to say that's on our radar. And I think among the issues at the top of the list is whether we should be looking for some ways of, of over time managing demand for water by using the rates as opposed to simply covering our costs in the rate structure.
I, I believe that's where Kathy was going with that, and I, I agree with that.
I have a comment. This, the, the rate, the way we set the rates is not necessarily revenue dependent. The budget can be done. It's who's paying. So we can, we can, we can make the, the curve, the distribution curve look very differently, but still wind up with the same amount of revenue. As Nate had said, he's looking for this, a certain amount of money. Now, how that, how that is spread out is where, where the Water Resource Task Force can make some recommendations. And and do the rates have to change? Nate, do the rates have to change the same time every year? Or could we say we're gonna change the rate starting next quarter?
I would defer to Greg on that one. I'm actually not sure.
Okay.
I mean, I think we generally set them for a year.
Yes.
Yeah.
But if you come up with something and we would like to change them and it's not the same time as we have done it for the many years in the past, is that?
But that that is an option.
Okay.
That is an option. The convention has been to set them once a year, but you you do have the ability to to change the rates more often if if you feel like you need to.
That's, that's a great question.
Yeah, or it's just that if if we're in a position where we know what we want to do and the standard month that we usually change has just gone by. We're not gonna worry about it. We will do what we have to do.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
You want to say something?
We probably ought to give people at least a quarter's notice. To a rate that doubled at every, at every rank. The highest rank would be paying two hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents per yeah, cubic foot or cubic foot or cubic.
For one hundred cubic.
So. Okay, so that's a huge difference.
Yeah.
Watch out for multiple occasion. It's dangerous.
Oh, well, and you have FinCom background, so. And I don't want it to seem that I'm trying to rush through this and and but I think that at this point, this is what's before us. It's reasonable and the fact that we can come back to it and modify it as recommendations are made. It's really nice to know. Any other comments?
Move that we approve the rates as presented.
Second.
Okay, roll move by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Brian Solace.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Thank you. Thank you, Nate. Next up is drought conditions and Greg, do you want to give that update? Or would you like? Yeah, he's in a month as well. Greg?
Sure, so despite a little bit of rain today, a lot more further north where I am right now, but anyways, despite a little bit of rain, we are definitely experiencing you know, drought drought conditions. The state has sent out categorizations of the entire state, the eastern part of the state is is one of the driest areas. They continue to monitor it carefully and are concerned that this continues through July and August. And so even though our our own water supply continues to do okay. Certainly, Gravely Pond has been, has been dropping fairly fairly quickly. It's it's not alarmingly dropping, but but it is, it is dropping. And if the dry conditions continue, we will, we will, our concern will increase. It's, it's, the concern is when if you enter into winter with with low water, there's no opportunity really for that for that water to rebound, assuming we get snow instead of rain in the wintertime. Until the spring, until you get the melt off. So again, the word now is, you know, be mindful. We encourage people to voluntarily cut back on water consumption. So what does that mean? That means, you know, you shouldn't be washing your cars or washing down your driveways or sidewalks with your hoses. You shouldn't be having that irrigation system running every night. You really should limit yourself to irrigating once a week. And in the past, when we have had drought conditions, you have mandated hand watering only. We're not at that point yet, but I think we could very easily get there in the next couple of weeks. So if this, if this continues, I could see in your your early August meeting with the potential of issuing a mandatory cutback in irrigation in particular. That is where we see high use in in dry conditions. And that's what really drives our water consumption in the in the summertime is high irrigation use. And so the word now is to please on a voluntary basis, start being mindful and cutting back. And if, when we revisit this at your next meeting in two weeks, we may need to take further action.
Thank you. I know the state has said it's somewhere eighty or ninety percent of the state is in a stage two drought right now.
Right.
So I was, why, could we put, have something on the website? Or go out in the tide about some of the voluntary things people could do at this point, such as hand watering, five P to eight A kind of a situation. And and the rest of what you mentioned, Brad?
Yeah, so we do have that up on the website. We put up the the state of guidelines and their their categories of of condition, drought conditions. Were in level two, very rapidly approaching level three. And so they do have a series of recommendations. I did a quick summary of what those recommendations are. So we do have those up on the website and encourage people to to take a look at them and to do what they can.
We're on the website. I haven't seen it.
I'll have to ask Tiffany that question.
Yeah, I didn't see anything earlier and I don't seem to see anything now. Doesn't mean I'm not in the right spot, but anyway. Yeah, I'd like to do that and are we using the signs that are, when you come off the highway, are we using those for anything right now or can we put something about, you know, please be mindful of water use?
Yeah, we certainly can.
What is that? What do other people think about that? Is that?
What are they being used for now? There's something there.
School street.
School street, yep.
A bolted pine in school, they're saying that? Because if there's a sign at Pine also.
I believe so for truck traffic.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well then.
But we can, we could add something to that effect.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah, and they can go to mass.gov if they want to get deeper dive on that topic. Anybody on the board?
From a purely optics standpoint, every morning sprinklers are out here in front of town hall.
Greg? Nate?
We can turn those off.
We have been doing it in hand, so it is us controlled, so we can simply, each morning we put them out and then we take them back in.
I just have to walk in out every morning.
Yep.
You're across the street. Maybe you want to come over at seven o'clock. Okay, Sarah Mallage has a comment. Sarah?
Yes, so when you're thinking about future water restrictions, I think you need to seriously consider the type of landscaping that's used. Instead of having an adult ban against irrigation, you need to contemplate it. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in my yard switching out all the grass for creeping time. I'm on granite ledge. I've got trees and shrubs and they have to be watered or they die. Grass doesn't die. So I think somehow you need to take that type of thing into consideration.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments on drought conditions at this point? All right, tree policy. Everybody had a chance to review the town's tree policy. And this was brought up because we have a situation where a town tree was taken down. It was probably a heritage tree at that. Greg, did you want to speak to this?
Sure, so quite a bit of work the new policy, working with Friends, Friend of Manchester Trees. There was quite a bit of back and forth on this policy. So the the end result was that eleven feet back from the edge of pavement. Any trees within that zone is considered a public tree. There are some exceptions, you know, if there is a stone wall that's clearly demarking the the property line, we assume that the stone wall, even if it's within eleven feet is the property line. That's just an example of some of the, sometimes when there's an exception. But in general, the policy is stating that if the trees within eleven feet of the edge of pavement, that it is considered a town tree and that the property owner is not to be taking those trees down without first getting, having a tree hearing before you and having a decision that would allow that to take place. So I know that the Friends of Manchester Trees, they did contact the various tree companies that do work in town, trying to educate them on the new policy. I'd say we have not done a very thorough job, you know, reaching out or some sort of outreach campaign to homeowners themselves about the policy, and that's something that we can think about and have best to do that. I think there's a need probably for that and so that we don't run into these situations where someone, I think unwittingly, knowingly violated the policy. We're following up with the homeowner. The policy calls for replanting of tree or trees. In this case, it was a large tree and I think, you know, a couple or three new trees need to be planted in its place. And that's something that DPW and the Tree Warden will be working with the homeowner to make sure that that happens.
I just want to point out that it's relatively new, but the policy, actually, we did that last year, so it went into effect last year.
Right.
So over a year ago.
Right, exactly. So I think, Becky, I think you wanted to make sure we had this on the agenda to talk a bit about how how we can better educate property owners to make sure that that the sort of incidents do not occur. And that we we have a well-informed public so that we can avoid these kind of situations.
So one of the questions I have is when new residents move to town, I know we've got the icon, Welcome to Manchester. There, there's a good amount of information on there. I don't see that we have something there specifically about the trees. I don't know if we can add that on there. There certainly, we do have our, the the Welcome to Manchester Committee. Or people are still two, four, five people on it at this point, one of whose term is up this year and may have actually already left. But maybe we can ask them to include something when they do a packet.
Yeah, I I think it goes broader than that. I think most people in town don't know what the policy is, much less the new folks. Is this policy on our website somewhere? And I was kind of looking around on the website and I said, if perhaps I was thinking about trees, where would I go to find out something about trees on the website and you start looking at not that, not that people who are taking down trees would be proactive in doing that, but I'm just trying to think ways to get give people the information or at least access to it.
Yeah, and I just, I just went, I mean, you would have to know to look up tree, I just typed in tree policy, but if I didn't, you know, I mean.
Did you come up with something?
Yeah, I came up with our final, the the policy.
Okay.
At the top of the the list.
And where is that on the website, I wonder?
See, it is under documents.
I can weigh in.
Also under Public Works.
Oh.
Trees, Manchester, M A dot U S. So it is there. Go ahead, Nate.
That's, that's what I was just gonna say. It's on the DBW Trees page.
Can we maybe include in town mailings, be it excise tax or real estate taxes or anything else over the course of next year, maybe a small fly. Everyone's getting it. Maybe once or twice.
Maybe, Greg runs out of urgent things to write about.
You'll be an article on that.
Article in the cricket, or maybe we could just do a separate article in the cricket. But I think the most effective way is to make sure that every tree, every place that takes down major trees knows that this is a problem, this is prohibited.
Well, and there will be.
And perhaps we have to, we have to make the contractor partially responsible.
Well, we also talked about that last year when we were talking about the policy. And we were also talking about documenting heritage trees, town trees. And we were going to do something with Friends of Manchester Trees. Do you remember that, Greg? They were actually going to.
Yes, they're gonna do an inventory.
Right, and I wonder if they did. I can reach out to Sue Yin and see. I know there's Friends of Manchester Trees event Thursday, which Saturday can't attend. So I'll reach out to Sue Yin and find out, but it would be good to follow that up because if, if a homeowner has heritage tree or public trees on their land, we should let them know, or town-owned trees. Lot of work, but.
Pretty much everybody has a town-owned tree.
Well, not necessarily.
Within eleven feet of the.
Well, I mean, for example, I live on a private road. If it's a private road, town doesn't, you know, that's, that's a whole different situation. But if what we do is maybe we can even just let people know what if they have a heritage tree, which is even more important and to be cognizant of what a town tree is, we can put, include that. Christina, you have a comment?
I do. Yep, thank you. Could you just reiterate and explain? I missed a little bit of the eleven feet is.
Christine, go ahead and state.
Sorry, Christina, the Lucio six Lincoln app, sorry. Thank you. And are you liberated to disclose the address?
I don't, I don't think so because I'm not sure that they have been, I don't, I they've not been notified about being, we're not discussing them specifically. And as far as the tree policy goes, if you would, I it'd probably be easier for you to go online to the town website, type, type in tree policy and it'll come up. That's because it's, it's, it's three, four, it's a four-page policy.
Sorry, I had that and I did not realize that that eleven feet was in there. So is that applied to fences? Anything else within that eleven feet? That's where I was just trying to get the eleven feet, some clarification on that.
We're just talking about, this is just pertains to trees.
Okay, so are you saying that the eleven feet is town property?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted the clarification on. That's it. Thank you.
But Greg, I'll let you clarify that.
So in some cases, it is definitely town property. In other cases, it is not. Sometimes it's just a right of way. But the policy on a uniform basis says eleven feet from the edge of pavement. Typically, it is within the town right of way. Because most, most of the right of ways are much wider, obviously, than the, than the pavement itself. So typically, you have a road right of way, or maybe it's forty feet wide. And you've got a paved area of twenty-four to twenty-eight feet or so. And so you there's definitely room on either side of the age of, edge of payment that captures town land, but in this what we're saying is that trees that are within eleven feet are considered to be town trees for the purposes of the policy.
Christina, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And for just a moment, Steve Gang, I forgot to ask, were you, were you reporting as concom slash? concom slash Water Resource Task Force, and if you would just state your full name and whether you were talking as a towns person or.
Yes, I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, this is Steve Gang. I was speaking as the Chair of the Water Resource Protection Task Force.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Clarification for Debbie. All right. I I would like to see this followed up as, as if we can. I'm happy to come in and help if it would help to move that along in terms of following up on this specific instance as well as trying to figure out how we can get information. So first thing I'll do is reach out to Sue Yin and see if they've done anything in terms of, or following up on town trees, if they've determined what are town trees, if they have a or what's that list when you compile? What's the word? Town tree heritage tree list. Thank you.
Inventory.
So I will talk to her and I'll let everybody know. And in the meantime, someone's going to follow up on the other situation.
Yeah, most definitely.
Okay, great.
Chuck indicated he was gonna write the resident a letter when he gets back from vacation.
I don't want to wait that long. That's another week, and it's, it's already been two weeks, and I I think that that's too long.
Okay.
Christina.
Just I wanted to make sure that you knew that on the map Geo sites, there is a layer for trees.
Okay. Christina Delicio, what's in, in your.
Oh, I'm sorry, again, Christina Delicio, six Lincoln Ave. On the Manchester map Geo, there is a layer that you can click on, and the town trees do come up and are visible. So I think that list is pretty complete.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's good to know. I'm on that a lot, so huh. So what do you, what do you click on, Christina, for that?
So it's, it says layers.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And it says trees.
Super. Thank you very much. All right, so next on our agenda is the Board of Health proposed MOU. Greg?
Yes, at your last, last meeting, we had the Board of Health members in, and we were talking about the desire to have a memorandum of understanding that would clarify and make clear the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Health and, and town governance, their relationship to the rest of town and and how the Select Board and my role of overseeing departments, how that can best work together. And so we've crafted this memorandum of understanding that spells out those roles. Had a draft, and the, the Board of Health met last week, I believe it was, a week before, last week, I think, to review that and give suggestions. So then I sat down with with Paula Philias and Peter Calaruso, and the three of us went over it and fine-tuned the language so that it, I think, was meeting their, their needs as we, as we work together on, on a, on an agreement that spells things out that make it clear and allows us to collaborate together as we go forward. This is partly precipitated by the desire to move forward. As you know, in the new budget, we have approved moving with a full-time or potentially a full-time health agent up to a full-time health agent, depending on who we find and their skills. And I think having this memorandum of understanding in place before that person is brought on board will help help everybody as we, as we move forward. So certainly welcome Paula and Peter's comments. The, the draft was circulated to you, made it out. As I say, we incorporated those changes that, that the board was suggesting. And that, that's what's to be forced tonight. If we need to do a little more fine-tuning, we certainly can.
Has Select Board had an opportunity to look over the MOU? Memorandum of Understanding. Okay, I did get a call, an email from Peter Calaruso, who said he hadn't received his, but then that they did, he and Paula did get it. Paula, have you had a chance to go over this, or have you, or no?
Yes, hi. This is Paula Polophilius, co-chair of Board of Health. I did receive the document with the revisions that we sat down and reviewed with Greg late this afternoon, so we were able to distribute it to the board members and again, I just want to reiterate that what we have found as a board, while we were while we were looking for resources to help us to understand what our roles and responsibilities were on a state level, as well as on a town level, we found ourselves caught between what the state expects of us in terms of being an independent agency and what the town expects of us being under a home rule petition. So that is the, that is the purpose of this memorandum of understanding. The, the attorneys at the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards had recommended that we take this avenue so that we can have the autonomy that we're supposed to have, which the state expects, but yet function under the town's governance where we have home rule petition. So that is where all this is coming from, and we took the original memorandum of understanding and we revised it here and there. And the revisions are in red, and I don't know if the Select Board has any questions about the revisions that we made, but I'm, I'm here to explain why we asked for the revisions we asked for. And, and hopefully everybody can come to the conclusion that we're in good shape and and now the, the board's next step will be to advertise for the health agent now that we understand how the how we will supervise that health agent.
Okay, and yes, we, we've been in touch with the state as well, and I, I guess there've been some misunderstanding earlier on that has been clarified. Greg, has Town Council had a chance to look over the latest markups of the MOU?
Yes, and she's, she's very comfortable with this direction. She thinks it makes sense to do this, and it can be helpful. So, and she's comfortable with how it is structured and the wording.
That's good, because that will enable the Board of Health to function much more efficiently, I would think. Any comments from the board? Questions for either Paula or Peter? Brian?
I'm good. John, I think it's fine.
Yeah, I will think. Kathy? Thumbs up. Can you not unmute? All right.
There we go. Yes, everything's fine. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. And I, I have no questions either, Paula.
Great.
So, and I guess, next step?
Yep, next, next step for us will be to assemble our advertisement for the health agent and, and get that out there so that we can start interviewing candidates.
Yay. That'll be wonderful. All right, so Greg will have this MOU done up and Paula and I can sign.
All right, so would be appropriate for, for the board to take a vote to formally endorse the MOU, and I believe the, the Board of Health will do the same at their their meeting later this week.
Well, that would be a good idea. Okay, do we want to see, are, is everybody amenable to voting on the draft as amended here?
Okay, may I have a motion, please? Move to approve the updated memorandum of understanding between the Select Board and the Board of Health as presented at our eighteen July meeting.
Grab a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round, roll call vote, Ann Harrison. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solissey?
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. All right, there we go.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Paula and Peter in particular. I thought it was a good effort to put this together, and I think we're, we're on a good path forward.
Thank you, Greg, too.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Peter.
Bye.
Okay, next on the agenda, remote meeting participation approval that went before. So it's, it's, it's just waiting for the governor to sign it now. Greg?
So yes, we fully expect the signature for continuing with, with remote. I still think it's worth your while to go ahead and approve the, the pre-pandemic part of state codebook that allows remote participation. It's a little different than the emergency remote. So under, I mean, emergency authorization, which is, is being extended, assuming the governor signs, allows everyone to be remote. And the pre-pandemic law allows you to do remote, but the majority of a board or committee need to be in person. And it allows a, a few of the board members and committee members to be participating remotely, and, and obviously the citizens can participate remotely. So it is a little different, but it doesn't hurt to have that on the books as, as we go forward and give, it just gives us the option. If, if, if at some point the emergency legislation authorization goes away, which at some point it will, though they may codify it before this, again, expires. But just to protect ourselves and allow, for example, if three of you were here tonight rather than four, that would be fine. It would allow two of you to be remote. And that we could always operate under that provision regardless of the status of the emergency authorization.
And I, I believe that, that whomever is chairing has to be in person as well.
Whoever is chairing the person, meeting needs to be in person. Yes.
Right. Okay, so we should take a formal vote on this before the governor has signed?
Becky, by me?
Yes, Kathy.
Hi, I received an email this morning that Lieutenant Governor Polito signed the Remote Meeting Extension Bill in Governor Baker's absence on Saturday. This email was sent to me by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. It's that, that same group that runs the training sessions that's going to take place for municipal employees on Saturday, and I guess I'm on their mailing list. And I, I'm reading here that the Remote Meeting Extension Bill was signed into law by Lieutenant Governor Polito on Saturday. Cities and towns now retain the option to hold public meetings remotely through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Excellent. Yay. Okay, so
okay, what we're just as a backup, that we want to ratify are not, not the emergency, but the previous permission that we're, you have to have a majority of the board and the, and the person chairing. And what I'd like to know is, is does anybody have the section of Mass General law that that applies to, so that if we make a motion, it's based on something other than a vague description?
Yes. It's open meeting law, right? Chapter twenty-two. Is that the one, Greg?
Well, and also, it's under, it's under the CMR, which I have in the, in the memo to you. And I'm, I thought I had it up on my screen, but I see that I don't, so I'm just trying to find it quickly. So that, yeah, here we go.
Nine forty CMR, twenty-nine point ten.
Thank you. Yes, I was just getting there, but yes, that's right, John.
What's the rest of it?
Twenty-nine point ten. It's on page two of the K P R.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. Yep, okay.
Shall we move, I, I move that we accept the conditions of remote participat- participation under nine forty CMR, twenty-nine point ten?
Yes, you have a second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round, roll call vote, Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Brian Solissey?
Yes.
Don Round?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Okay, wonderful. So that, that next up, we have the Select Board Workshop for July thirtieth, and Greg said it's usually nice to be off-site, however. Thinking perhaps we do it here in this room?
This room or room seven, room seven? It's easier to, we don't have to have.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We don't have to have Kate Anne.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah.
Okay, all right. So how about room five, Greg?
Room seven?
Thank you. Okay, and we have tentatively said nine noon on that one, right?
Yep.
So, yeah, nine to noon, room five, seven. Room seven. I'll be all by myself.
What's the time?
It is nine o'clock. Nine to noon.
Nine to noon.
In room seven. Okay, got it, Debbie? And so review the format and topics, Greg?
So like I say, historically, in the past, you, the boards have taken sort of a look in the rearview mirror first, what, what went well, what were some spots or in events or incidents or processes that didn't seem to go so well that we might want to learn from and improve going forward? So like I say, part one is, is sort of looking at the good, bad, and the ugly over the past year. And then identifying some areas that you would like to improve upon, and so then identifying specifically what those are and outlining, outlining how you'd like to improve those situations. And then it's always good to look at your own priorities and what you think are, are front, need to be front and center for the next few months. And as we gear up for another budget cycle, for example, what are some of your budget priorities? What are some operational areas that you feel are, are need the most critical attention? And what are some of the longer-term efforts that you feel are necessary in order to steer the, steer the town in a, in a healthy direction going forward? The challenge is always, you know, keeping it to a relatively small list so that we can focus. That's, that's always a challenge, that we, we have so many things coming at us that, that it is, it's easy to lose sight of some of those priorities because we're dealing with the crisis of the day. But I think it's always helpful to identify what those priorities are and, and talking about how we can make sure we stay focused regardless of, of what the crisis of the day is. So that's the general format that we've used in the past. There's no, nothing saying we have to stick to that. So I welcome your thoughts on that, and we don't have to finalize everything tonight, but over the next two weeks, we do. So if you have some ideas and you want to share them tonight, that's great. Otherwise, you can get them to me and Becky and So if you have some ideas and you want to share them tonight, that's great, otherwise you can get them to me and Becky and and we'll work on an agenda and format.
I think, why don't we have people individually email Greg and me together? So each, each, each board member can email us with their thoughts on, on how they think the meeting would run effectively, as well as let's say three topics each and see what shakes out of that. Does that sound good Greg?
Yeah, I think that can work fine.
The way it was organized last year I thought was pretty good, there was a process procedures area. There's a projects area and a new initiatives area. And maybe when you say three, it could be across all three of those areas. But breaking it out in those categories, I think organizes the thought process a lot better for us.
Sarah Malice, you have your hand up? Sarah? Okay, Kathy, did you want to say something?
I guess, you know, everything that's been mentioned sounds good, I'm just wondering when we get to talk strategy for the town.
Greg, that was definitely on the list, you were, you brought up strategic document at one point. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't disagree with anything that's been said. But typically, we would have an overarching strategy that we all agree to. That would be an umbrella that all of these other topics would fit under. I'm not sure when the last time the Select Board actually talked strategy based on all of the, you know, emergencies with the pandemic and the forty B. When is the last, you know, is there a document that we could, you know, those of us who are new could review? Just a little unclear on strategy right now.
Why don't, may I make a suggestion that Kathy, if you can reach out to Greg regarding that, I think that that would probably be the best way to go at this point. Is that what you think Greg, that work?
Yeah, it does, I would say we have, we have not had an active strategic document.
Right.
Not recently.
Select Board, yeah.
Not, not recently.
Right.
Okay, I'll send you a note Greg and maybe we can chat next week. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, wonderful, so next up we have Select Board Liaison Update. And one moment please, I think, is this Erica? EMB, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh there, hey, sorry, I didn't think I could, it's Erica, yes, hi. I just wanted to ask a question.
Are you, are you calling from, for Cricket or Citizen?
Oh, sorry, Erica Brown from the Cricket. Although I'm curious as a citizen as well. No, I have just a quick question that doesn't, isn't on the agenda and before you get into liaison, I figured I would just ask it. It's a clarification question from the last meeting when you got the update from Peter Colaruso and Steve Gang on the proposed bylaw for, from the Board of Health. The next step for that is what?
Put off for a bit, that's, that was, that was, that got slowed down just a little bit.
It did get slowed down, but I'm wondering where it resides now. My impression was that it resides as it has for the last seven months with the Board of Health. And Greg, in a conversation, he was thinking that it resided with the Water Task Force. But in all fairness, it wasn't clear and I actually rewatched the meeting, so I'm just asking sort of, what is the next step for that?
Okay, so we have, though we've already done comments not on the agenda.
Oh, okay, then I, you know what, I can follow up later on it, don't worry about it.
I, this is something that really ought to be on the agenda if we're going to.
Yeah, because it, that, that puts it into a different category.
Got it, I got it, I will follow up just to sort of see the specifics on what happened at that last meeting so that I can be accurate, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 sorry Erica, thank you. Okay, Kathy, and I know I kind of touched base a little bit about liaison updates. Do the lia, various liaisons feel comfortable in what was explained in terms of the updates or no?
No, I think, I think this needs to be on the to-do list in fact for our meeting.
Why don't we, okay, perfect, okay, alright, that'll be one of it. Unless Kathy, do you have anything you want to touch on at this point?
Yeah, I just think it's worth mentioning, so I'm liaison to the Planning Board and the ZBA. Just on the Planning Board, they spent a lot at their July eleventh meeting, they spent a lot of time reviewing some of the the updates to the website that have been done to try and help residents understand the proposed new bylaws. They put in a nice table there with some really good information that's easy to see. And then they spent some time discussing what other types of information could be helpful to residents. And we talked about rather than trying to anticipate the particular impact of a bylaw change, instead communicating the risks or opportunities of that change. So Chris Only is now working those changes and he's seeking feedback from folks and I just think it's a good path for them to pursue and they're still doing a lot of good work in that area. So I just wanted to mention that and I think that was the big thing. And the forty B, obviously, there's no shortage of attention on that. I think there's one more meeting left for the public forum on that and then the ZBA will do their deliberations. That was it.
Thank you. Okay, any, any other?
I can speak to the. And so at their next meeting, they're going to discuss hours of operation, there's nothing on the board, nothing on the books.
Why are there lights, there aren't lights, so they can't play after?
Anyway, there have been noise complaints, so they're going to look into this.
When you say noise, you mean the ball, not, not people, it's the ball.
It is a very.
It's a noisy, the other question is, and I, not that this diminishes somebody's complaint. I'm curious if there are a broad number of different people complaining or?
Just the one.
Just one, okay, so there has been aging, okay, no, I just, that's, that's good to know. We'll see how, I know it was very busy today.
I can't be very much louder than the kids playing basketball in the basketball court.
Actually, if I may, there's, I have a family member in another town who's lives a little too close to a pickleball court and there are some best practices regarding distance from, you know, between homes and pickleball courts because they are very loud, it's the ball, like a wiffle ball.
Right.
And it's not the people.
My mother had one nearby, one location, so, alright, well, good, thanks for Brian. That's good, you know, anything else?
I am pleased to say that the Council on Aging is not meeting in July or August.
Word on that liaison gig. Okay, thank you, alright, so that brings us to consent agenda. We will take the approval of the July fifth minutes out and approve those in this meeting's minutes at the next meeting. Is everybody able to read over the early voting hours?
Yes.
Any issues or concerns with that? Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I do have a question, I just don't, what, what is it changing from?
Well, Greg, you want to, I know the hours are decreasing based on the population voting, but Greg, do you want to?
Right, so the legislators just recently passed a new law that codifies early voting going forward. And the standard is to have thirty-five and a half hours of, per week. For, for towns that have over, to have five thousand or more voters on the voter list. So we're below that number and so towns below five thousand voters, they're allowed to reduce the hours by twenty-five percent. So instead of thirty-five and a half hours, we would be open twenty-nine hours a week.
My question my question was around hours of operation, so for example, in the memo it said the target is from nine to four on Monday through Wednesday. Was it previously available from nine to six? And my question is why, when we change the hours and reduce, I'm fine with reducing the hours. I'm trying to understand why we would select a range of hours when people who work during the day would not necessarily be able to take advantage of it. I thought that was the purpose of early voting, but I'm just trying to understand.
Right, so, so there is a later time slot on that Thursday. Go until six. And there's also, there's always the option of mailing, you don't have to be in person. So that's, everyone has the option of mail-in voting.
Was there early voting later though, or did it go later?
The first time around, I'd have to double check what she had for the hours, that it wasn't it wasn't codified the way this is. So they, they did allow it to happen and I don't know if they were prescribing it so much as they are with this new law.
Just would encourage us to understand the voting patterns of the people in town and whether or not, you know, on a traditional voting day, is it busiest between nine to four on a Tuesday? When, you know, when we do our voting in November, is that the busiest time? Or is it early in the morning, or is it later in the evening? When would be most helpful? Well, just, right, I understand it's early voting, but I'm just trying to understand if the purpose of early voting is to give people flexibility. It feels like we're definitely targeting a population that's available from nine to four. So I'm just it's hard to get back here to, you know, for six o'clock if you're working somewhere else.
As I recall, the voting was open typically town hall hours. Didn't go late on Thursdays either, so.
Didn't go, okay.
Yeah.
She needs time to break, set up and break down.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
Yes, I guess just, I'm fine with it the way it is, I guess my, my point would be as we're making these decisions in the future, it would be nice to have just some sense as to data to back up why, why these particular timeframes are chosen. And that would, I think that would go a long way, thank you.
Part of the issue with the data though is, you know, the population shifts. So the data, you spend time and money collecting data and how long is it pertinent? Would be my question.
And she says it should be available by appointment on Friday.
Although it says parentheses nine slash two, in other words, not any time.
That's on September, Friday, September second, right, that's the one Friday.
That's good, by appointment, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, but it's, I get where you're coming from on that Kathy. Anne?
No, I'm, I'm just wondering if we ever collected any information about when people showed up to vote.
You mean here or at the actually voting the day of vote?
Voting the day of voting, well, that's where we would have information because we haven't had that much early voting.
No, and the, the machine registers each, you know, so I would imagine the machine would have times. Not necessarily a timestamp, but when it goes through the machine, would it log when, when votes are being made?
Yeah, just for sorry, just for clarification, I'm not looking for a science project here, I just am looking for some rationale as to why the timeframes were chosen. I fully expect that the town clerk knows when the busy voting times are just off the top of her head. But without any rationale as to why these times are being chosen, I'm just looking at it from someone who used to work outside the town of Manchester getting back here to vote by six o'clock is tough, especially on a Thursday. So I'm just curious, that's all.
If you want to do the early voting, and if you want to do the early voting, you can still do a write-in early voting.
Yes.
In terms of the actual day of voting, getting back, I mean, I've worked enough with those that we can talk about busy times there, but, but I think in terms, I don't.
This is to take a crunch off of voting anyway.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Motion to approve the consent agenda please?
Yes, we have the question of a room.
The rooms, oh yeah, yeah.
And the room five, if we're having meetings here and trying to use the full remote capabilities requires assistance of the cable TV guys. And so unless there's a meeting that requires that, we ought to use room five because room seven can be used for a committee meeting without outside assistance.
Right, and I'm sure Diane, and everything goes through Diane anyway, meeting wise, so she would know what would be available and what would not. But that's a good point, so have her use room five.
Recommend room five unless something comes up that absolutely requires room five in which case she's going to have to set up the room seven for that day.
Okay, does that sound good? So we will, we will the vote is to approve the early voting hours as, as suggested by the town clerk with the recommendation that room five be used unless unless a conflict. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Move what you just said and.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ann Harrison move, John Round secondary roll call vote, Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, there we go. Town Administrator's report.
Alright, thank you, and again, I can be fairly brief here. So I think most of you probably heard of, or read yourself fairly large article in the Boston Globe concerning compost facility for the west of here in Westminster. And they have run into a pretty significant problem of PFAS contamination coming from a composting operation. So we received a number of emails expressing concern and about our own efforts in town moving forward with a compost operation. And is that going to be a source of PFAS contamination in our water? So there's some significant differences in the operations, first of all, size. Our operation is about two percent of the, of the operational size of the Westminster one, that's a very large operation. It's run by a subsidiary of the paper mill, they are processing paper byproducts and they are also processing a lot of sludge from sewer plants. And both of those sources are the likely sources of their PFAS contamination. Working with Black Earth, our vendor, moving forward with their facility, they are not using. Uh, they are not using either of those sources, nor do they plan to. Um, they are using um, food scraps, kitchen, kitchen food scraps, they're using um, yard waste, but they, they do not use uh, grass clippings, because they don't want to avoid too much fertilizer pesticides in, in, in the grass clippings. Um, so those are their, the bulk of their materials, are those two sources with some other materials as well. Um, compostable uh, utensils and the new products for storage, food and that sort of thing that are made to compost, uh, which are also certified to be free of PFAS. So certainly a cautionary tale uh, from the Westminster case, and it behooves us to, to be extra cautious and to make sure uh, that our operations would not uh, unduly uh, cause PFAS from entering our system. Now, the compost that, that Black Earth processes is not PFAS free. It is very difficult to find anything that is PFAS free. Uh, these chemicals are ubiquitous, they are everywhere. Um, uh, our goal is to make sure that their concentrations are as low as possible. And so we will continue to monitor, uh, Black, Black Earth already is testing their compost. Uh, they are below the thresholds. That are, have been established. Um, so that's a good thing. And the other thing to, to understand is that the new facility uh, will be fully contained so that the composting is taking place within um, a building, whereas now it's in the open. So we're actually, we'll be improving um, the control of the uh, of any leachate coming from of the compost operation. Any leachate from the new facility is collected and either recycled uh, and, and used to keep the compost, compost at the proper moisture level or any excess um, would be moved off-site and processed at a facility that can handle leachate. So that's the good news. They, they do plan to, to store the finished compost on, on top of the, uh, the old landfill. If that testing were to, to reveal PFAS levels that were, that were higher than we would above the thresholds, then we would cease that operation and they would no longer store the finished compost on site. They would just simply um, truck offsite, uh, the finished compost from, from the building. And that will be on site. Um, I don't think we'll have to go to that level, but that is our fallback if we need to. So we'll continue uh, to monitor the situation and uh, be in constant communication with, with Black Earth. They're very aware of, of the concerns, and I think they are committed to working with us uh, to make sure that, that we're not introducing uh, any contamination into our, our water supply. Currently, the, the, the landfill site is a, is a hotspot for PFAS. It's not surprising when you when you have all of that trash that's bounded up. There are PFAS in, in all those products that are disposed of. Um, and so we do have a, a high concentration of PFAS currently i- at the landfill. Um, we are monitoring that. The very good news is that that is not migrating towards um, gravelly palm, as, as, as the levels of gravelly palm are, are quite low. So that would indicate that there's not a hyd- hydrologic connection between the two. Uh, we'll be doing some additional testing to confirm that. Uh, part of the task force, one of Water Resources Task Force, that's one of the things that they'll be looking into. And I know that, that Chuck and Nate have, have talked about wanting to uh, to do that additional testing to get that confirmation. So I just wanted to get that out there, and we can have more discussion uh, if, if needed, we can certainly as, as things progress, uh, hold a, perhaps a dedicated forum on the whole issue of PFAS in the community and in our efforts to make sure that we are at safe levels. Um, in, in addition to the, the compost operation, just what we're finding at the Lincoln Street well and our, our our fallback measures, if, if the levels in that well were to go over the thresholds. So that's something that we can do going forward. So if there's no questions on that, I'll move on to topic two. Topic two being, uh, in the past, you, you had the harbor master, Brian Pike, in to talk about some possible float expansions at uh, at Reed Park. Um, you asked him to review that with the finance committee. Uh, that was done, the finance committee was, was in favor of, of expanding towards uh, the drawbridge, the railroad drawbridge, but not towards Morse, uh, Morse Pier. Um, they felt that that, from an aesthetic point of view, if nothing else, was important uh, to preserve. Uh, but moving, expanding the floats towards uh, the, the drawbridge, the railroad drawbridge, they felt could be done with, with minimal visual impact and that it, it would allow um, the harbor to operate, to generate more revenues, uh, which will be important as we go forward with um, a dredging regime that should be done, basically a quarter of the harbor or a third of, if we go on a quarterly if we divide the harbor up into quarters, we would do a dredging every ten, ten years. Um, you could do it every, you could divide it up into thirds. And do a slightly longer duration between those dredgings. But the, the critical point is that there, there's a, there's a high need for the, for the harbor to be generating some additional revenues so that we can make sure we're maintaining uh, the harbor. Uh, it is, it is not a naturally deep harbor. Uh, you look at the old photographs. And it basically was a mud flat, and it's been artificially made a deeper, deeper water harbor um, for, for the various boats. So it's something that has to be continually maintained, and there's, needs to be a revenue source. Long, long-winded way to say that um, FinCom was, was agreeable to expanding, at least in that one direction. And so Brian is working on a couple of grant opportunities that would fund, uh, fund the project at, at a hundred percent. And as those, as those get developed, and then as, if, if we get awarded, we will be back before you to get final approval to go ahead with, with the project. On a, on a definitive positive note, um, the, Brian was able to secure funding for engineering of options for the um, rotunda at Tex Point. As you know, we're on, on borrowed time there with the old pilings um, which are in very poor condition. And we either need to replace everything in, in their current place, position, or think about relocating uh, the rotunda uh, to a more secure location out of, out of storms way. And that'll be a, a debate and a, a, a hard decision. Obviously, I think most people really love where the rotunda is today. But that's a, that's a discussion for down the road. Uh, but the good news is that we were able to secure funding um, to help with the engineering of that um, through the um, Seacoast Economic Development Council. And when they fund uh, engineering work, it puts you in a very good position to um, apply for construction funds as well. Um, it's, it's capped at a million dollars, but that million dollars obviously would, would help, help us in our efforts. Regardless of the decision we make on location uh, for the rotunda in the future. So that's a, a quick update there. And then finally, on, on dispatch. Uh, moving forward with the IMA that has been circulated to all of you. Uh, moving forward with uh, the regional center ordering the various equipment uh, needs that, so will be provided to us as part of uh, merging with them. And uh, again, in terms of um, working with our dispatchers, we're, we're hopeful that they will consider um, uh, applying for positions at the regional center, making some information available to them about that. And the center has um, scheduled um, an open house just, just for our dispatchers, so that if they wish, they can take advantage of that. And working with, with our neighboring communities to make sure that if, if indeed our current dispatchers decide to, to leave prior to the formal switchover, that we have a plan B in place to get us, get us through the period uh, before regional center is, is able to take us on a hundred percent. Um, and we'll have more on that as, as we finalize those plans in the next couple of weeks.
On that note, um, I, we haven't had um, an update on the town website regarding next steps for that. And I think that it would be good to have some information um, but on the website, just, just what people can expect. Or at least just have an overview of.
Yes, yeah, no, we're working on that. And Kathy gave us some good, uh, some good templates to use, and we'll be working on, on getting that information up uh, within the next, uh, the next week or so.
Has there been any um, feedback from our um, dispatchers regarding the offer to apply over there and um, bonuses, et cetera?
Um, so we've had, um, we've had a meeting with them. You know, it's fair to say that obviously they're very disappointed from, from their perspective. And, you know, I think it was a little soon for them to be thinking about what their best next steps will be. We've been trying to reach out one-on-one, uh, having the lieutenant and the chief uh, talk to, talk to individual dispatchers and provide some additional information. And I'll be getting an update from them later this week.
Other than the, the one, possibly two, who had actually been talking about leaving prior to this, um, is that, that they're still planning that, but we haven't had anybody else say they had intentions. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay. So I ju- I just think it's important for everybody to understand that, that, you know, the, the two, one, possibly two who are leaving were doing so regardless of, of what happened with dispatch.
Okay, and then finally, uh, just wanted to make sure we were looking at our calendars uh, for August and September. I know um, you know, between different travel plans and and uh, especially events that people have and their families or whatever. Uh, just want to make sure we're, we're able to have have a quorum and, and good, obviously, prefer everyone to be able to attend. You know, so the normal schedule, first and third Mondays. So in August, that would be August one and fifteen, if you stuck with the original, those, those normal dates. And then in September, uh, September fifth is Labor Day, which is the Monday. So that would mean meeting on September sixth, which is, is also primary day.
I will not be here for that. I will not be accessible at that time. So I don't know if uh, we need to, I don't know if anybody else knows whether they'll be here or not.
What, what date is that?
That's uh, Monday, the fifth, but it would be done Tuesday, the sixth. Okay, so.
I'll be here.
All right, wonderful.
I don't have much of a life.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I have one, but.
Well, only you do.
If I can help, that I do. All right, there we go. All right, so it sounds like we would have forum for that meeting anyway.
I will not be, I will not be in Manchester on the fifteenth with anyone. I'll be somewhere where I can latch on to somebody's wifi, but.
Um, so that's August fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody know of anything else? Up hand? All right, rest of you are very smart and staying in this gorgeous place this time of year.
You've already left and come back.
It is that. All right, good. Well, as long as we have forum, that's, that's good. I guess that takes care of it for tonight, Greg?
Yes, that's, that's good for me. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, um, so we will see everybody on the workshop on the thirtieth at nine o'clock in room seven. Okay, um.
Move to adjourn.
Second, so, okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacy, roll call vote, Anne Harrison?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. Good night, everybody. Eight away.
Night.
All right, good night, thank you.
Kathy, have a great weekend.
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate it. Bye, buddy.
Bye.
Right, thank you, Greg. Enjoy yours.
Yeah, thanks. I'll see you end of the week.